How about motion to approve the minutes of April 25?
So approved. It's all made, whatever. So moved.
See, I know.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
I would say the only adjustment is that we have Pat here for 6:15. We have someone else coming in at 6:45, so we will honor their coming in and stop our business if we don't get through it by 6:15, okay?
Sounds good.
Presentations and discussion items, FY '17 budget. Is that Chris or Annie?
It's together. It's in your packet.
Oh, it's in tandem.
It's in tandem. It's in your packet, and I know the school committee also is very interested in speaking with the viewing public about this. So the budget has changed since the version that the school committee originally approved in April, at the April public hearing of the budget. I believe that was April, correct? And that is because at town meeting, the local contribution that we had requested was decreased by just about $75,000. So the budget that you have before you reflects that decrease in local contribution. And in order, the school committee has to adopt a balanced budget, so we've made the necessary adjustments to ensure that we only factored in the local contribution that was voted on town meeting floor in May.
All right.
Annie, what are we compromising?
So what we've had to do in order to make those cuts is we have, we are assuming that we are going to have these cuts restored. That's, if I'm not mistaken, that's what we were told.
Well, we're third in line.
That...
Have we dropped from second to third?
Oh, did we? Are we second in line?
I don't think we have dropped from second to third.
I really didn't get much sleep last night.
Okay. Well, we are, we are planning on having those monies restored because what we did was take money out of supplies and tax, instructional supplies and instructional tax at the elementary and high school, at Hopkins Academy, and at Hadley Elementary School. Those are the majority of the decreases. We did make some adjustments as well in electricity and in fuel, but we picked away at materials and supplies in various instructional class centers because, not that we don't need those supplies, but we don't need to buy all of them in September. So that restoration is vital on town meeting floor in, well, that's not town meeting, excuse me. Yes, it is. It's Fall Town Meeting.
Fall Town Meeting.
At Fall Town Meeting.
So that means we'll talk more about tri board, but attendance at the tri board meeting and certainly attendance at select board meetings as we lead up to Fall Town Meeting will be important so that we can remind the select board of the intent to replenish, restore that $75,000.
So do you need a motion?
Yes, we do need a motion.
I'll try again.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY '17 budget in the amount of $7,812,554.32. Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Thank you all. Superintendent update.
What I included in your packet, this really is two-point font, that it was on a large legal sheet.
Indeed, notice my glasses on. Yes.
So I had shown the school committee the binder I put together of some artifacts that align with, because it's coming near to the time where you need to do the superintendent evaluation, so I'm dedicating this particular update to just touching base on that and letting you know it's available for your review. So I do have a binder of artifacts in my office. We could also PDF all of those, but it's a lot of paper, so if folks are able to stop by and take a look at it, I'm more than happy to walk people through those artifacts and certainly if individuals wanted to say, ask me to present additional material on another artifact, I'm happy to do that. And what those artifacts are, are they are artifacts that I think demonstrate the work that I've done around the standards for effective practice. Those standards are also, we embedded those standards in the goals that we wrote for me last year. We pushed it out to two years because of the gains we were hoping to see on MCAS. And so that the standards of effective practice are essentially aligned with each one of the goals. And what you see on the sheet are the impact measures that the school committee had agreed upon at the time that the goals were written, and the status in 2014 when I started. Then you see updates in 2015. So the self-study completed, the approval of DDMs, also those things were completed last year. The expectations for MCAS, you see under impact measure where they, where we want them to be, and the yellow saying, well, it's improved, but it hasn't gotten to where we want it to be. And unfortunately, in one case, it actually did go down. The CPI did decrease. And then as you go across, you see the status of impact measures for each one of the goals. Under goal number two, management and operations, the impact measures were, again, all educators having their district-determined measures completed and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education approving those. That was incomplete in 2014, complete in 2000, last year. Also, a survey of educators on ed eval implementation that was completed last year, and the guidebook and the results were shared with the school committee. The survey of parents under goal three, of parents and families, 2016 by school committee, that's what you're doing right now. You had one that was in place before I got here this spring, before I arrived, and that's a survey that, Humira, I think you'll be talking a bit about this evening. And then also the survey of educators regarding all the staff. I surveyed all the staff. If you recall, last year I did that in a Google survey. I opened it up to school committee so you could view the results as they came in, and that's what you see in one of those boxes as well. That was last spring. Around disciplinary referrals, some of the things we've been looking at. 2014 was year one for implementation of positive behavioral interventions and supports in our kind of baseline data collection year. One of the places we've seen the most improvement has been on the bus. So that 95% refers to, our bus referrals were at their highest in October at Hadley Elementary School. They were at 22. We had 22 students who were getting bus referrals in April, and as of May 18th. Each of those month only had one student. So we've seen the greatest gains there. You saw in 2014, I think it was in 2014, you saw a survey from Hopkins Academy that Mr. Beck had done, and the places where the school committee was most interested in looking was that students feeling, students reporting bullying and harassment. You wanted to see a decrease in that. We certainly did. From 14, 61% of students said that they had seen or witnessed bullying and harassment, and in 2015, that was down to 22%. We did keep the questions the same. And the increase in students receiving positive reinforcement, you see, that's not quantitative there. We still are, even last year's data around PBIS, we're getting better at consistency. We don't feel as though our data was, the reporting was entirely consistent. In other words, people were not reporting, not everybody had the same idea of what a major infraction was or what a minor infraction was, of what physical, you know, roughhousing was, or verbal aggression, "I don't want to do this," or is that disruption, is that some sort of verbal aggression. So there's all kinds of disagreement, and we're getting better at getting clear on what do we mean by the behaviors we expect and the behaviors that we're trying to improve and modify. So I don't have a quantitative indicator for that. And that is my update on goals for this month.
Thank you.
When do we give the evaluation?
I should probably be giving you the evaluation soon. We should have, so that, you haven't done one, right?
No, I didn't do it last year.
Okay. So the way it will work is I'll send out the tool. Each person sends their thoughts back to me, and then I compile it and we go over it. So I'll send that out soon. And it would be great if you could make time to go over and see that, review the notebook, go through it, and then we'll try to do that, review it at the June or July. School committee meeting. I feel like June is already busy. What are we doing in June?
The upside, we are doing a bit in June. I can't remember everything that's already on. But the upside to July is maybe, it's unlikely, but maybe we could have some preliminary MCAS data too.
Oh, okay.
Wouldn't be data that we could share, but in generally, we could comment on whether or not it was positive, because it won't be certified yet. It would still be embargoed if we add anything.
Okay.
We'll definitely have some access data.
July it is. Any questions for Annie on that? Is that clock right? Do we know? Is it?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
I think so.
Are you doing the elementary school update as well?
I will. Unfortunately, Mr. Udall is, it was, had to stay home today. He's not feeling well, so he's sorry he cannot be here. What I really wanted to talk with the school committee about were two things. One is a change in practice, and I'll also announce that I want to thank the committee that assisted with helping us to select an interim principal for Hadley Elementary School. We, the original committee, I'm not sure how many interviews that you had, I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head.
We interviewed eight people.
Interviewed eight people. So certainly if you want to talk about that process at all, but there were...
We had a great diversity of skill sets and talents. We had about nine search committee members representing all different aspects, from parents to teachers, special ed-focused, to regular teaching. And we, we just had so many qualified candidates. In the end, we ended up recommending two that we felt were equally amazing and qualified, and we were very happy and unanimous in our decision to put forward those two for your consideration.
And I met with both of those candidates, and the candidate to whom I offered this position and who has accepted is Dr. Joan Wickman. Dr. Joan Wickman is currently the superintendent of Carlisle School District in Eastern Massachusetts, and previously was the superintendent of Union 28 School District. She has an extensive elementary background. Both of those school districts are elementary school districts, and she also has experience as a classroom teacher and an elementary school leader, as principal experience. So we're really looking forward to having Dr. Wickman on board, and she will start on August 1st. And that brings me to, there's been a practice in Hadley Elementary School of sending out classroom assignments at the end of the school year. And this year, parents should expect to get their classroom assignments closer to the end of July or early August. And here is my thinking on this. It's not just about some sort of change in administration. We don't see major changes for that reason. But we have folks who either, if we have, still have available school choice slots open, or we have move-ins, that things can change with the numbers, and then we have to move students. And so now, I've been told one thing and something changes, and until, the closer we get to the start of the school year, the less likely it is that something would change. And we'd like to just communicate the information once and say, here's the class assignment. So parents will get that information before the start of school, but typically, they've gotten it before the end of this school year. They would be told, here's your teacher assignment for next year. And instead, they'll get it midsummer, early August.
And how do you expect that communication to be sent?
I was just going to ask that.
So we, the truth of the matter is that probably what we're thinking in terms of configuration, like for the most part, it's probably going to not change all that much. So more than likely, we will have letters prepared to go out, and we would pull any changes, so we'll be good to go.
No, I think she's asking, how are you telling parents not to expect it?
Mailing. Oh, not to expect it?
Right.
So I'm talking with you all first, and then also I would go to one call now. So two questions.
Those are interesting questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So one is via mailing and, you know, to, and then let parents know, please expect something to come home in the mail, and you'll have your classroom assignment and any other additional information we want to be sending to elementary parents in the summertime. In terms of letting them know about the change in practice, assuming that the school committee doesn't say to me, well, here's what you haven't considered, or I would rethink that, which I'm open to any feedback, that's why I'm bringing it up. Assuming school committee thought it was reasonable, then I would send out a one call now to parents and explain, this is a change, this is why.
I'm not like terribly opposed, but I do think that there'll be parents who wish to know sooner rather than later, and you probably will have some feelings expressed, I imagine.
Mm-hmm.
About that.
Yeah. And I anticipate that, and I mean this question sincerely. I really mean this sincerely. I'm trying to understand why.
Yeah.
What, why does someone need to know now? I mean this sincerely, because I want, if there's something that I'm not...
Sometimes parents aren't happy with the assignment, and they want to speak to someone about it. But it's not unprecedented. I can remember a year when we didn't find out till close to the end of August.
I feel like all of my sons, we didn't find out till the end.
Yeah.
Like, it was weeks before school started that we found out. I thought that was common.
Yeah, I, I, I think it...
It's been so long.
It's gone back and forth. It has been in a report card, it used to be, and then it went to the end of the summer.
Yeah.
And I don't know when it went back to being in the school here, but it's always, there's always some drama. I haven't heard a whole lot about changes requested, honestly. I feel like there's a lot of community interaction that happens around, oh, you're, you know, you're going to be in this class and that class, and kids mentally prepare, and, you know, parents, you know, share that information. It's a small enough community that you end up knowing exactly who's in your class coming up, so.
Right, right. So I do, I think that that's wonderful, and I want to, that's why we want to do it, not two days before school starts. So there is time for people to connect around that information. And I appreciate you saying that, Robby, because I thought, gosh, is there something that people are afraid of? And I, but I mean this sincerely. I, we have really well-qualified teachers. There is no teacher that I would not want to put a student with. We have excellent teachers at the elementary school. If, sometimes there are reasons that parents have, I understand, that have absolutely, they're not making some criticism of teacher quality, they have other concerns, but there's still time for parents to communicate with the principal. And actually, the principal for next year will be on board then too. So it would facilitate that communication rather than starting a conversation in July and somebody else trying to figure out where that left off. So I'll proceed with letting parents know, and I too figured that there may be some feedback, and so I wanted to make sure I talked to the school committee about it prior to. We, as requested by school committee, I included in your packet, are projected enrollments by grade, and some of our folks for school choice actually had decided that they may choice into another district instead of choicing, they've changed their mind. If you look at kindergarten in particular, we're looking right now at a total projected enrollment of under 30. So we are considering opening up more school choice slots. That's the overarching recommendation so that we have a larger class. We know, we had this conversation, that we don't want to exceed 20 students in a kindergarten class, but we have a lot of room, even if we had move-ins come in during the summer.
I feel like our vote, though, was a specific number per grade. Do we need to revote?
So your total school choice slots, you voted total slots, although you looked at where they'd be distributed.
Okay.
Your vote was 17 total slots. But what might be helpful is specifically, perhaps, to say that school choice with the understanding that, in kindergarten, to expand school choices without, with the understanding that in kindergarten, we want to cap enrollment at 20 students. Does that...
Does that cap kindergarten and first grade?
Yeah, we did. Well, we're still there. We're not, you're not suggesting we're taking anyone else in first grade, just kindergarten.
No, it's really, we're really looking at kindergarten, because it was so small.
Was there a cap for other grades? Did we say 25?
What typically happens is that once you go over 45, I've been told this is historical practice, once you have about, once a grade hits 45 students and you have two teachers at the elementary school, then you start thinking about whether or not you need a third.
A third.
Third class. That 45 has historically been this magic number. We're not written anywhere in stone here.
That didn't come from the school committee.
Okay. All right.
Not by vote, maybe by discussion.
Right, maybe.
And it's not something the school committee told me. This is something that I've just heard that's kind of been the practice.
Do we have any historical knowledge about how many go from K to 1? Is it just, are all the people in K what we're going to see in 1?
Typically, typically, we retain, and, and we...
Are there more that...
Have some students that have indicated to us, we have some families that have said they're thinking about alternatives, but we don't have any families right now that I know of, the last report that I received, that were, that were thinking about choicing out in the lower grades. They were going to private schools. That's what they were looking at. And so we do have some families who are exploring some private school options, and I think we have a couple of folks who are looking into our specialized charter schools, performing arts and Chinese immersion. But most students stay with us from K to 1, you don't.
And other additional students usually come in at first grade that haven't gone through kindergarten?
Yes, we get choice all through elementary. We get a lot of students who want to come in, not a ton, I shouldn't say a lot, across elementary schools. Hadley's the place where people want to come to school. People are calling us and saying, when are you going to vote school choice? And most people want to come in in kindergarten, so typically, it's kindergarten. This year, kindergarten was the only place where we had a lottery, and that's where we're coming back to this kindergarten. There were people that, we pulled lottery on kindergarten because the number of people interested exceeded the available slots. And so now, we're saying we'd like to open up more slots in kindergarten, and we think we can.
Do you need a vote from us?
Well, because you voted at that cap of 17, and perhaps you'd like to state that it's, it's okay to revisit kindergarten if you want to state the cap in that vote, but I would defer to the school committee on that.
17 per class.
This looks like we've only accepted nine, right?
Yeah, yeah. So we probably still have plenty of room in that 17, but we also, some of those choice slots were available for Hopkins too.
Oh, oh, I see.
Mr. Beck will also get choice inquiries...
Yep.
Throughout the year sometimes. He has students shadowing throughout the year. The choice inquiries at Hopkins don't time, the elementary folks usually tell us well in advance and get that squared away, and choice in 7 through 12 can happen throughout the year.
Guess it doesn't hurt to say we would open up more for kindergarten.
For a total cap per class of...
Forty.
Forty.
Yes.
Twenty per class, forty total.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Done?
Motion to expand to a maximum cap of 20 per class.
For kindergarten.
For total of 40 in kindergarten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we, let's see, that, was that Mr. Beck here? No.
No, but I do have, he gave me his information. Mr. Beck, Mr. Suddenek is out today, and Mr. Beck is out being the athletic director right now. So I just wanted to provide some information about some senior end-of-year events, since that's rapidly approaching. I have been sending home weekly emails to families and trying to put these events in there, but I only do it one week in advance. So we are in our senior last week, and I did say that in my last email. It does really make me sad to say that. They are such wonderful young people. I so enjoy coming into Hopkins and talking with them. They're, they're just a delight. I will miss them. I missed last year's class. I'll miss every class I come through here. So we have a senior seminar on Tuesday, May 24th. Ms. Serantino takes students kind of through a closing of the year, end-of-year safety, being careful. We have prom coming up this weekend. We have a pre-prom assembly on Wednesday, May 25th, and our fire chief and our police chief join us for that. Again, the purpose of that is really to underscore the importance of being safe and responsible. On Thursday, May 26th, we'll have some graduation preparation in the Second Annual Smith Academy versus Hopkins Academy. It's our senior field day. It's a lot of fun, and we also will be doing a voter registration drive. I'm pleased to announce that one of our graduates from last year, Allison Huntun, who's a student at Mount Holyoke College, contacted me, and she's active in the, this town's Democratic Committee. Is that correct? And not just through her college. And so they are going to do a voter registration drive for Hatfield and Hopkins seniors. All they need to do is bring their license. We'll have laptops there. They can register, they're 18-years-old, register for any party they would like. We have our spring athletic awards banquet Thursday, May 26th. Friday, May 27th, we will have a high school awards assembly from 9 to 10:15. The principal will purchase pizza for the seniors at noon, and for the superintendent, I will add, because their last year was quite good. And Saturday, May 28th, is the prom at Hickory Ridge. Our senior class trip is next Tuesday, May 31st. Our senior banquet is next Wednesday, Metier at 5:00 p.m. Class night is Wednesday, June 1st at 7:00, and graduation is Friday, June 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Please come and support our graduating class. We look forward to having everyone there. That's our senior update.
Questions? Okay.
That's great, because you would have to ask the A.D. and his, A.D. slash principal is out on the field.
We'll go outside.
And you have a personnel report, so I told you, we've appointed a high school, excuse me, interim principal elementary. So when we did this report, we didn't have, we hadn't solidified the offer and acceptance, but it is Dr. Joan Wickman. We've hired a special education coordinator, Tammy Seymour, and she's coming to us from Holyoke. She's currently educational team leader in Holyoke Public Schools with experience K through high school. And we are sad to, as you can see, our nurse Carolyn Sorrentino will be resigning at the end of this year. Huge loss. All of our faculty who's leaving us, just a tremendous loss. Ms. Ethier will be completely retiring again, and we have an English teacher at Hopkins Academy who's resigning at the end of this year, and we're grateful for Miss Bernier's service to Hopkins Academy. We've appointed a speech and language pathologist, Catlin Kurana, and we've appointed Mr. Evan Bartlett as our music teacher.
Questions on that, folks? Nope. Okay. We have moved on to the public comment period. Hello, public? Nothing? Okay. Chris, you're up.
Okay. Can we start with the, with the expense report? Not a lot of excitement, again, in the report. You might see some available balances in the negative. A lot of those have to do with some year-end adjustments we make, where we charge certain portions of the expenses to the preschool revolving account. Right off the bat, the first number, elementary school principal, is showing as a negative balance, and the year is not done. That's because we take basically this negative amount plus the remainder of the year, and that gets charged to the preschool revolving. And there's a bunch of these scattered throughout the, throughout the report, you know, electricity, water, et cetera, are all...
I should know this, but it's embarrassing that I'm asking, but even if that wasn't the case, that would be okay, because you can have a negative line item as long as the category stays positive, right?
As long as the end, end number is above zero.
All right.
We're all happy, yes. But I just wanted to explain, you know, as you look through the report and you see a number of negatives, that is the reason why. We will be closing out a lot of the open purchase orders that we have. Certain bills that we get on a monthly basis, we basically put aside the entire budgeted amount at the beginning of the year, and then each month when the bill comes in, we just chip away at that amount, rather than writing a purchase order every month for something like the electric bill or something. We will be closing those out and moving it just into the available balance, so that'll give us a better picture of what we have remaining for the rest of the year. But I don't see any issues, so, again, sometimes boring is good, and I guess this is just one of those cases. Any questions on that? Okay, if we can move to the grant report next. Again, a lot of boredom here. Basically, and, you know, you can see the amount remaining, there are a couple of grants that have zero remaining. Those have already been fully used. If you look at the 298 federally childhood grant, that one has now been fully used, just between when I ran this report and now. And even items like the, the top one, the 140 Title II-A, has had another payroll hit it. Basically, it hadn't been posted yet, so I, you know, it's not shown on this paper, but it's gone down by about another $2,500. So again, we're running these down. Obviously, we use every dollar that's given to us. We don't ever send a check back to the state or federal government for unused funds, so...
But we are hoping for some circuit breaker carryover, right?
Circuit breaker carryover is, is nice, and it's welcome, yes, without a doubt. Just because, you know, again, it certainly gives us a cushion with any kind of unanticipated spend costs for next year. So yes, that would be the one item on here that you would not see going down to zero.
Do you have a prognosis on that? How much we will carry over?
I'm hoping for 25,000 to 30,000. That would be a-
And next year's claim should be bigger.
Yes, right. Good point. And when do we find that out?
In July.
Does it require the state budget to pass, or it's, or no?
I have to file all the, the claim to get reimbursed.
Okay. Thank you.
And the last item I had was just the generator project update.
Are you going to tell us about revolving?
It's not so good then.
Yeah, that's, you just glossed over that one, didn't you?
I did, because I didn't print out a copy for myself.
Would you like to see? Athletic is showing nineteen to the good, school lunch, nine thousand to the bad.
Yes, the lunch account, you know, we were in the same boat last year with the lunch account, and what we ended up doing is transferring, last year it was we transferred $10,000 of the lunch, food services administrator's salary to the local budget. We will do something like that again, that'll take the expenses out and bring the account balance back to above zero.
Do we have the money for that?
Excuse me?
Do we have the money in the budget for that?
I believe we do, yes. Last year you had voted to use school choice money-
Exactly.
But we did not. We did not need to, so I prefer to really just keep that, as I'm sure you would as Preschool, again, you know, I mean, it's been hovering really around the same amount all year. You can see it's gone down, it's gone back up, and it'll probably remain, well, actually, no, it's going to go down by quite a bit, because once I transfer all those expenses with the negative balances, it'll go down. So, you know, we'll see that affected next month. But really, nothing, you know, athletic revolving is showing a nice, healthy balance. That was something that a couple of years ago, the auditors had kind of just pointed out to us that, you know, you probably shouldn't be consistently just growing this account every year, and you should probably utilize some of it. So we have, as you can see, brought it down as far down as around $9,000, and now it's back up to nineteen again, so, you know, I'm sure they'll be pleased with the churning of the funds, and we're pleased with the balance that's in there as well, so. Any questions?
No.
Can see I was just anxious to get to that.
Yeah.
So the generators, I spoke with the contractor this morning, they had filed for the permit. He thought he had received the permit, but he was going to check with his project manager, and I thought I'd hear back from him today, and I did not, so. But that is certainly in the works. I know they were here, they did some preliminary drilling and, you know, stuff like that, just to, you know, start to get ready to do it. We anticipate that it's going to be done over the summer, because there's just going to be a lot of noise and, and that kind of thing, so.
So there were some problems?
There were some issues that we had to kind of work around.
And we feel those problems are resolved, and the contractor is coming back on the job?
The contractor is, yes. So I guess, you know, basically, they're, they're kind of at a holding point at this point, while those things were getting resolved, so they took all of the tools out of here and, and brought it back with them. And then the owner of the company called Jeff the same day and said, well, we took the tools, but we are coming back. So it's not, it's not kind of, we walked off the job type of thing. They just, they can't go any further until those get ironed out, and-
I think there was some expectation from the town that no contractor would bring any tools onsite until such time as a permit had been issued. Is that your recollection as well?
That is, yes.
So that also could have contributed to the need to pack the tools up and go until such time as the permit was issued.
And basically, now, we are just-
And so they've replaced a permit.
I'm waiting for him to get back to me and tell me that, yes, he did, in fact, get the permit.
But he has filed.
Two, yeah, two weeks ago, he has. And, and that's basically where we stand at this point, so. Any kind of, of issues that we need to work around, I've asked the contractor to let me know what those might be, and if we can just make adjustments and move forward.
Thank you. We look forward to that project being done.
So do I.
And over with.
For years, four years.
Yes.
All right, we have ten more minutes. School committee reports. Oh, subcommittee assignments, people. Ready?
Do it.
Finance committee, tell me if this is all right with everyone. Finance committee, Heather and Paul. The school committee capital committee, school committee capital committee. Linda and Paul, the town capital committee will be Linda, policy, Humira and Roby. C E S, Roby through September, Humira after September. Technology, Humira. Nutrition and wellness, Roby. Union negotiations, I have not talked to Heather about this, but I will, Heather and Humira. And tri-board, we are all welcome. I will try to be the lead on that. Okay? Got that? Unit D contract, we need to, in open session, adopt the unit D contract. And I believe we have specific language provided to us by our superintendent and attorney. So I would entertain a motion to accept the unit D collective bargaining agreement for F Y sixteen through eighteen.
So I'm with, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice. Policy subcommittee, we know the policy subcommittee needs to meet, we still outstanding have the school lunch policy. We also need to talk about a stipend issue. Stipend?
Differential rate issue.
Differential rate issue. Have fun, girls. And the parade is Sunday at two, my friends.
Are we doing it again?
Yeah. What time do you have to be there?
Um, I haven't heard, one thirty?
One thirty under the tree?
Yeah, by, at the Legion?
The Legion.
With like fifty-five pounds of candy, because we never have enough.
Yes.
Yeah, everyone buys some candy, and then, and we need to learn how to ration it out so that we can actually-
Make it ourselves.
Yeah.
Hopefully, there will not be rain. Don't wear white.
Don't wear white. So are we all going?
I think so, perhaps. I'm sure Heather will be going.
I'm going to wear white.
Okay. And tri-board, I sent an update out to all of you after the last tri-board meeting, June, at our June, oh, that's what we're doing in June? Our June school committee meeting, hopefully, the capital committee will have prioritized our capital plan and put together a proposal to go to CPA, and we will vote on that in June. Hopefully, our superintendent and business manager will give us our three budget scenarios that we talked about last month for us to review and look at. That would be then submit both of those, the prioritized capital plan and the three budget scenarios. We'll work with the tri-board in July to create a forecast, a budget forecast, that's both operating and capital, and then that sets the stage for continued work. And the next tri-board meeting is-
July.
July 11th or something? Sorry, hold on. No, 13th. July 13th, six to seven. Okay, that's all I have. Humira, parent and community survey.
Yes, thank you so much to my colleagues who provided feedback on the survey, on the parent survey. As you can see, we cut back substantially the number of questions while preserving really the essence of what we wanted to know about how we were doing in terms of curriculum, instruction, family, community engagement, and so forth. And so I incorporated that feedback and largely tried to preserve the questions as is that we did go with, so that we could compare it to last year's scores. Put it in the survey format, sent it out for testing amongst other parents, got some feedback, really great feedback, that they, that they really wanted to provide feedback by, by school. So how they may rank one school in certain category will differ dramatically from the other school. So I, given the savings in time, because the overall survey took about five minutes, we were able to add in the same questions for second school. So now, parents are asked whether they have a student in the Hadley Elementary School, and if they do, they complete it, and if they have another child in the Hopkins Elementary, they just add it. So five minutes per survey, and we launched it on Friday. Thank you, Annie, for including it in the one call, email as well as phone. We have sixty-six responses as of today, which I'm very pleased with. We sent out a Facebook post, and there'll be reminders throughout the week, I'm sorry, several, next several weeks, and a final, hopefully, one call, if you wouldn't mind, on the 17th, intending to close it on the 20th, do some analysis that week, and then maybe, if all goes well, present it at the next meeting. It's ambitious, because I'm traveling three weeks out of the four for June, so I don't want to make promises, no guarantees, but, but definitely by July, by the evaluation, possibly by June.
Did you, last year, you all had some help with evaluation, a evaluation analysis committee?
I think there were two people, Linda, I'm sorry, Heather and Ryan. I might seek Heather's assistance, and there'll be two of us, I haven't told her yet.
I just assigned her to a bunch of committees.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, Ryan Scott, who's helped us on the technology committee, was very helpful. I remember during the presentation, he was here, before I was hired, I was at one of the meetings, and he was there to present.
And I'm sure he'd be, he'd be game for it, he was one of my testers, my own testers, so I might tap into that as well.
Questions?
Thanks for joining.
People, that was so amazing.
I believe so strongly in the power of feedback, so I'm so glad we're doing it. It's been two years, so.
I actually have this problem to-
Yeah.
Robby?
CES?
Oh.
We need to vote on the budget Wednesday, and-
The CES board, I'm sorry.
CES budget for fiscal year seventeen. I don't expect the district assessments to go up, but fees for sped programs will probably rise.
By?
For next year.
But do it by two and a half percent, by eighteen percent?
It was so early in the morning when we had that meeting. Not outrageously. You, Pat, the sped directors have been told, right? Hadley doesn't have anybody in Hack Academy, or-
Oh, this, I see.
These are special projects.
Usually, correct me if I'm wrong, but usually it's not a percentage increase across the board, but individual programs, the tuition, so it wouldn't be one.
Right, right, yes, that's right, right.
So it's based on, you have to distribute the expenses based on your average enrollment, and so that changes from program to program, so it's hard to say they'll go up by two percent.
All right.
And usually, most collaboratives keep their programs competitive to market when they look at the O S D, which is the operating services division, publishes all the prices for all approved placements, and so, it's, but it's hard to quote one increase.
Yeah, every, every program has a different thing, because it depends on the number of students.
Okay.
Roby, question, have they increased the per pupil membership for the district?
No. Is that 36, people, something like that? That's a no.
Yeah, no. Okay. Do I do votes in the bottom?
Oh, do we have any other votes?
Yeah, you do. My most, I got voluntary recognition in school choice.
Oh, we need to have a motion that we transfer up to $60,000 from school choice into the special education line to meet expenses.
Motion to transfer $60,000 from the school choice account into special education.
Second. Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Thank you all. We did the revised budget, we did the unit D contract.
You need recognition.
Oh, right. We need to voluntarily recognize the United Public Service Employees Union Local 424M.
Motion to voluntarily recognize United Public Service Employees Union Local 424M, subject to the required posting under the Regulation of the Division of Labor Regulations. Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Thank you. And our next meeting is June 27th. That's all good for people?
Yep. Sorry, June 27th.
Unless we, yeah, 5:30 regular session.
Yes. No, I'm sorry.
So no, so no, Humira.
Well, we do have that.
Oh, we have remote participation possibility.
We have that possibility, yes.
As long as there's a physical quorum present-
Right.
Then you can run.
I, it would be, hmm.
Well, keep us informed. I'll, I'll contact Heather.
I've never done it. Right, it's true, I have done it. I think it, timing-wise, I might be presenting a paper at an annual conference at that time, so let me just double check.